Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. I'd like to announce that at the conclusion of our first public session, we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters. We plan then to reconvene in public session following the executive session. May I request that everyone take a moment to turn off your cellphones or BlackBerrys? Thank you. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this board meeting will also be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can be accessed via the CUNY website. I would like to congratulate most warmly our Vice Chairperson, Philip Berry, on his reappointment to this board by Governor Patterson and his confirmation by the New York State Senate. Philip Berry is a great example of the way, the many ways in which trustees of this board devote themselves to the advancement of our university. Along those lines, I would like to thank again our Vice Chairperson, Philip Berry, as well as trustees Hugo Morales, Rita Di Martino, and Corey Provost for participating along with the Chancellery, presidents, students, and faculty in a very well-attended CUNY luncheon on February 13th, held in Albany during the Black Puerto Rican Hispanic and Asian Legislative Caucus Conference Weekend. Many state and city executive and legislative leaders attended this important event, and thank you all for attending that. The board held its Brooklyn Borough hearings on Tuesday, February 16th, 2010. Trustee Sam Sutton chaired the hearing that was also attended by trustees Rita Di Martino, Corey Provost, and Manfred Phillip. Members of the Chancellery were present, as well as CUNY's Brooklyn College Presidents or their representatives. Thank you all for attending that hearing. Summary of the hearing has been circulated to the trustees and to the Chancellor's Cabinet, and transcripts of testimony are available in the office of the Secretary. Our next borough hearing is on Monday, March 15th, 2010, at the College of Staten Island. Finally, but certainly not least, this past Friday, the CUNY Community College Basketball Champions were crowned with Queensborough Community College Lady Tiger, being a BMCC finalist. For their third straight title. Host Kingsborough bested BMCC for the men's championship for their second straight championship. Congratulations to all participants. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kingsborough Community College Earth and Plenary Science Professor Harold Connolly Jr. is head of a mineralogy for the Osiris Rex Proposal Team, one of three finalists selected by NASA for its next space mission in the New Frontiers Program. If it is selected for the space mission, the Osiris Rex team will fly to an asteroid, study it, and return with a sample. Congratulations. CUNY School of Law's Community Legal Resource Network has been selected as the recipient of the American Bar Association's 2010 Lewis Brown Award for Legal Access for Employing Innovative Means to Enable Affordable Access to Legal Services for Those of Moderate Income. Congratulations. Finally, the College of Staten Island Political Science Professor Ming Ziyah produced and translated an HBO documentary, China's Unnatural Disaster: The Tears of Shigana Province, which is one of the five films nominated for an Oscar in the short documentary category. Congratulations. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Bearcats, Baruch College Men's Volleyball Team, ranked number four in the country, recently swept Harvard University in a tight match of 30 to 28, 33 to 31, and 30 to 27. Congratulations, Bearcats. Graduate School and University Center Biochemistry graduate Lea Cohen has been accepted to participate in the 60th Interdisciplinary Meeting of Nobel Laureates and will be traveling to Lindau, Germany to meet with Nobel Laureates at this important event. Congratulations, Lea. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You have at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our January 25th, 2010 meeting. It's in the trustees' calendar book for your reference. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to echo your congratulations to Vice Chair Berry on his reappointment, and it's wonderful to have you continuing in that important role, Philip. Let me very briefly go through some enrollment numbers, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The preliminary reports from our colleges indicate that enrollment for the spring 2010 semester will exceed 258,000 students, the highest number ever for a spring semester since we have been capturing those data. In addition, applicants for both freshman and transfer admission for the fall 2010 semester continue to surpass last year's record pace. The number of transfer applications at this point in the cycle has more than doubled compared with a similar point last year. This increase appears to be coming both from students wishing to move within CUNY, this is so fundamental to our theme of the integrated university, as well as from students currently studying at colleges outside of the university. I have indicated to the board, Mr. Chairman, on more than two occasions that while we welcome the increases in enrollment due largely to the burnishing, I would say, of the university's reputation among colleges and universities, and also because of the very poor economy where people are looking to come to the university to shore up their skills, to enable themselves to compete more effectively in a very, very difficult workforce. Having said that, we continue to be concerned that with this very large increase of students knocking on our door, that we will be able to maintain the level of academic experience that our students deserve to receive. And as a result, we are monitoring our campus activities very, very closely. I've asked Alan Dobrin, our Chief Operating Officer, along with Lexa Loeb, the university's provost, to work with each of our presidents to really drill down deep into the bedrock of decisions that are being made, not only on enrollment, but on hiring patterns, to ensure that this university continues to be able to discharge its responsibilities, but at the same time becomes very, very careful with respect to the fiduciary responsibilities that we have for managing our financial affairs as a result of the very large uptick in enrollment. We want to ensure that we make this university available for students who wish to learn, but at the same time, we don't want to dilute the experience that our students have because we have worked so mightily to try to build up the value of the degree that a student receives when they leave the institution. So it's a delicate task that we have, but one that we continue to take, obviously, very seriously. On the state budget side, I have talked to you in some detail about the governor's budget. It is now, that budget has been remanded for consideration by the state legislature, and obviously, we are working very closely with the leadership of both houses, in addition to all of the other members of the state legislature. But just recently, two weeks ago, Governor Patterson announced that the state must address an additional $750 million deficit through the end of fiscal year 2011 due to further revenue erosion. Overall, the projected deficit that the state must address through the end of 2011 now totals approximately $8.2 billion, up from the $7.4 billion at the time that the executive budget was released. Through the 21-day amendment process, the governor proposed closing this additional $750 million deficit through the identification of new resources to be generated mostly through federal fiscal relief and a variety of increased and new revenue sources. None of these additional savings measures, I'm pleased to report, will have a significant impact on the university. The next several weeks are going to be critically important. Let me just go through very briefly the timeline. On March 1st, revenue agreement is required, and if there can't be an agreement between the two houses of the legislature, the state controller needs to break the deadlock. On March 15th, the dollars available for appropriation and distribution are to be determined, and March 31st, the state budget deadline awaits us. Possible scenarios are that there will not be a budget, and I think that has pretty high expectation at this particular point. Others could be protracted negotiations taking us well into the latter part of the spring and into the summer, or a two-way agreement, and we will wait to see. Obviously, we are deeply enmeshed in all of those discussions, and hopefully, this will be resolved at a time when we will have a much clearer lens on the amount of dollars that we will have to spend at the university. On the city's side, Mayor Bloomberg issued his 2011 preliminary budget on January 28th. The plan proposes reductions to CUNY of $9.5 million in 2010, which is a 4 percent, represents a 4 percent cut, and $15.4 million next year representing an 8 percent cut. With the current year reductions, the university will mitigate the impact on the community colleges to the extent that we can through the use of centrally managed accounts and reserves. And I have assured this board that we have managed our financial affairs very, very conservatively, ensuring that we do have reserves in place for times just like this. Obviously, the real issue here is how long this protracted problem that we have of under-revenue collection and expenditures that continue to grow will continue. We will continue our dialogue with both the mayor's office and the city council regarding the impact of these proposed budget reductions on our community colleges. On March 5th, there will be a city council higher education hearing on the city's preliminary budget. I've asked interim Senior Vice Chancellor Mark Shore to lead the panel representing CUNY in that effort. I also would like to thank all those who attended the welcome reception for the new and continuing members of the New York City Council Higher Education Committee. We welcomed the new Chair, Idonis Rodriguez, at that event. He spoke, Mr. Chairman, from the heart and talked to us about his experiences growing up in the Dominican Republic and his experiences coming here to the United States and the work that he did at City College. He is a graduate of the City College where he studied political science. So we were very pleased to be the very first organization to welcome that chair's group of members of the council. There will be a joint hearing of the New York City Council Higher Education Committee and the Committee on Civil Rights regarding diversity among CUNY's instructional staff. That will take place on Wednesday, February 24th. I've asked Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters to lead the panel for CUNY, which will also include Presidents Marcia Keys, Eduardo Marti, Ricardo Fernandez, and President Bill Kelly. Tomorrow, Chairman Schmidt and I will be meeting with the leadership of the Gates Foundation along with Senior University Dean John Mogalescu and his staff regarding the new community college initiative and the ASAP. The Gates Foundation, as all of you know from other reports that I've made to this body, is deeply supportive of our renewed interest and focused on student success. The Gates Foundation and CUNY are very much in parallel here, to the extent that our focus really is for when students arrive at CUNY, they are ready for doing collegiate-level work. And once they are here, we want to do everything in our power to ensure that they leave with a degree because of, as I have said and all of you, I believe, agree, a degree matters. And that is really the focus of the Gates Foundation, and certainly, it is the focus of this university as well. The planning for the new community college continues to make wonderful progress. The initiative continues to receive local and national attention, and it has been awarded planning grants from several prestigious foundations and has the strong support of Mayor Bloomberg. The planning team is set to begin working on the development of proposed majors with participation from faculty and staff across the university. In addition, I have asked Executive Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs Lexa Loeb and Senior University Dean John Mogalescu to chair a committee to identify the founding president of that college. Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank President Regina Perugia for her initial work as the Chair of the Haiti Relief Task Force. She has met with representatives from UNESCO and has communicated directly with Haitian university officials. I expect to receive preliminary recommendations from she and all of the community college presidents who are on that task force for me to react to, and hopefully, we can do something important here, especially if we can ratchet this up and get other colleges and universities in these United States to follow our lead. I'd also like to commend President William Pollard on agreeing to co-chair the New York City Haitian Community Hope and Healing Fund Advisory Committee. The fund established by the Brooklyn Community Foundation and the United Way of New York City aims to help address the short and long-term needs of individuals, families, and communities in the New York City area affected by the earthquake in Haiti. As Chairman Schmidt indicated, I've asked the board to go into executive session on an important personnel matter dealing with a new president at Baruch College, and then we will convene, as the chairman said, as soon as that executive committee action is over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there comments or questions for the chancellor on his report, Professor Philip?
Just a comment, I'd like the board to know that the Chair of the City Council Higher Education Committee, Idonis Rodriguez, was our guest at the University Faculty Senate Plenary, and he gave an impassioned speech for CUNY and for diversity among the faculty in CUNY.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chancellor, would you mind repeating the constituency of the planning group for the new community college initiative? I'm sorry, the, it is a very, very large, we have about 12 or 13 committees dealing with issues of governance, dealing with issues of curriculum, dealing with issues of partnership with businesses. There's a huge effort going on, probably dealing with, you know, well over 100, 150 people, largely faculty from across the universities, but administrators as well. So it's a very, very deep effort across the university.
I'd just like to add that at the conclusion of our meeting with the leadership of the Gates Foundation, the group is going, I think, to LaGuardia to spend the morning, have lunch, meet students, meet faculty, and it's really a great thing to see an enterprise as important as the Gates Foundation focusing its attention on community colleges and the tremendously important role they play. And CUNY has a wonderful opportunity for leadership in the design of the new community college because some of the new programs here that John and his colleagues have put in place, such as ASAP, are showing a better-than-doubling of graduation rates. I mean, these represent opportunities for massive improvement in the lives of our students with, and could have immense national implications if CUNY can be a national model for such dramatic improvement. So these are really very exciting, very exciting things that are happening here, and it's great to see them get the recognition that they deserve from people like the Gates people who are focused on this issue nationally and see us, I think, as real leaders. So congratulations to everybody who's been involved in the new community college planning work and in the new programs like ASAP and all the work that's going on at all the community colleges to figure out how we can dramatically improve success rates. It's a great, wonderful thing. Any other comments for the chancellor before we go on? Thank you very much. We'll turn now to policy items requiring a vote. I would like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for February 22nd, 2010. You have copies at the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the report? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, abstentions, that carries. You have in Section 2 of your board book, the meetings of the board meeting and executive session of January 25th, 2010. Are there any comments, revisions required at those minutes? If not, I'll move their adoption. May I hear a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that carries. We'll turn now to the reports of our committees. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on February 1st, 2010 and approved the following resolution. Calendar item 3A is a resolution calling on the Board of Trustees of the university to authorize the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the Office of University Controller to enter into a contract with a vendor who will provide vehicle liability insurance. The contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1.5 million annually for the initial one-year term. The contract terms shall include up to four one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest and shall be subject to approval as deformed by the University Office of General Counsel. This contract will provide a single automobile insurance policy to cover all vehicles owned and operated by the senior and community college. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions for the committee on the item? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Mr. Chairman, following the approval of the action item by the committee, Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Saffienza reported on the 2011 state executive budget and the New York City financial plan. In addition, Mr. Chairman, the university's chief investment officer Janet Krone and Cambridge Associates gave an update on the market and an update on our investment portfolio. Following that presentation, the university controller Barry Kaufman introduced representatives of the independent auditing firm of KPMG who reported on the university's 2009 financial statements. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on trustee Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this February 1st meeting, the committee approved four policy matters. Calendar number 4A, Queens College, three MS programs in risk management, risk management accounting, risk management finance, risk management dynamic, financial analysis modeling. These graduate programs prepare students for careers with organizations involved in risk management, such as accounting and information technology firms, as well as with governmental agencies assessing and regulating risk. Calendar number 4B, Baruch College, BA in biological sciences. This proposal calls for a creation of a formal biology major building on the excellence of the existing science faculty at Baruch. The program will provide students for entering graduate students, for graduate programs in biological sciences, or for entering professional programs in health-related fields. Calendar number 4C, Baruch Manhattan Community College, AS in biotechnology. The proposed curriculum combines the first two years of liberal arts and science education with introduction to biological technology research. Susan will be prepared to transfer to doctoral laureate programs in biology and related fields. Calendar number 4D, City College of New York, abolishment of Department of Behavioral Medicine, Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education. Following a vote by the Executive Faculty Committee of the Sophie Davis School of Medicine and consultations with the affected departments and faculty, City College proposes to abolish the Department of Behavioral Medicine, which has ceased to be viable. The two remaining faculty members will be transferred to other departments within the Sophie Davis School of Medicine. Mr. Chairman, item 4A through 4D were approved by the committee and recommend their approval by the board.
Thank you. You have a motion. May we have a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee on any of these items? Not, we'll take them up together. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those items carry.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on February 2nd, 2009, 2010 to consider the following items, which are now, which I now present to the board for approval. Items 5A through H pertain to a series of namings at the City College of New York and Hunter College, which I will present as a group. The gifts associated with items 5A through 5H total $4,500,000. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters to ensure their compliance with the guidelines and recommends their approval by the board. Mr. Chair, I present items 5A through 5H for the board's approval.
Thank you very much. May I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions for the committee on any of these items? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, all those items carry.
Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. May I call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has one action item for the board's approval and one information item before the board. The committee met on February 1st, 2010 and approved the following action item. Calendar item 6A, resolution naming the CUNY Leadership Academy in honor of Ernesto Malave, CUNY Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance. This resolution is appropriate, given Ernesto Malave's distinguished record of service to the City University of New York, his student leadership role while enrolled as a student at Borough Manhattan Community College, and his demonstrated long-term commitment to supporting and mentoring student leadership at CUNY.
You've heard the motion. I'll recognize trustee Loda to second it.
I will second it.
Any questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, item carries.
This is an information item, resolution renaming the university's Student Senate Merit Scholarship, the Ernesto Malave Merit Scholarship. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also report that the university's Student Senate approved a resolution renaming the academic scholarship in memory of Ernesto Malave. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Overcoming my concern about whether the honoree is sufficiently seasoned, I would like to move the awarding of the honorary degree that you'll find under item 7. Well, you're gonna do some great things, I'm sure. It's kinda like the Nobel Prize. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstention? That carries. That concludes our public meeting. We're gonna go into executive session, and then we will reconvene. Thank you very much. I'd like to reconvene the public session of the board and turn to trustee Panteleo, who has a resolution.
Resolved that Michael B. Wallerstein, Mitchell, sorry, B. Wallerstein, be designated President of Baruch College effective August 2nd, 2010 at a compensation to be recommended by the chancellor to the board, subject to financial ability. Explanation: The search committee, chaired by myself, at the conclusion of an extensive national search, recommended three finalists for the Baruch College presidency. The chancellor is recommending Dr. Wallerstein as president. Dr. Wallerstein is currently the dean of the Maxwell School of Citizenship and Public Affairs at Syracuse University. His previous positions include Vice President of the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation, Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense for Counterproliferation Policy, and Senior Representative for Trade Security Policy, Deputy Executive Officer of the National Research Council, and Executive Director, Office of the International Affairs, National Academy of Sciences. Dr. Wallerstein holds PhD and MS degrees in political science from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, an MPA from the Maxwell School of Syracuse University, and an AB from Dartmouth College.
Thank you. I'd like to second the motion. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Mitch Wallerstein and his wife Susan are, Susan Perlich, are with us, and we welcome you to the CUNY community.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and thank you very much for that lovely ovation. I'm deeply honored by the confidence that Chancellor Goldstein has shown in me by recommending my appointment to the CUNY Board of Trustees, and needless to say, I am equally grateful that the members of the board have accepted his recommendation. To say that I am thrilled and excited to be offered this opportunity to lead Baruch College is something of an understatement, and I would say, who would not be excited to have the opportunity to engage in outstanding faculty and staff and wonderful students? Indeed, it's the characteristic of the students of Baruch that first drew me to this opportunity when it was presented to me. They, their diversity, the range of places they come from, and the determination that they have to advance themselves and their families, make this a mission that I can be a passionate advocate for. They are the people who will lead this city and our country in this century, and it is an honor to help educate them for this challenge. I look forward to the opportunity to get to know all of you. It's a daunting group, but I look forward to the opportunity to get to know all of you, and also, in the coming months, to get to know the many friends and loyal alumni of Baruch College. And I know that we will be working closely together to meet the many challenges that Baruch faces, indeed, that the CUNY system faces in these challenging economic times. I've already been giving thought to the priorities and the directions that I would like to pursue during my presidency. I know that the college has many challenges, but I think it also has many advantages. Certainly, its strategic location here in Lower Manhattan, as well as its strong international character are things that we can build on for the future, and I would seek to do so. But I will have much more to say on this subject, of course, after I have the chance to do my homework, to learn in, to, not only to the Baruch community, but to the CUNY system. And I will look to my fellow presidents to help guide me in that process. The challenge in the near term is to continue to conclude my business at Syracuse, to get housing here in New York, and I look forward to being here in the late summer, full-time in the job. So, for now, let me just say that I am humbled by the task that lies before me, but I am eager to begin. Thank you very much.
Welcome to you both. We look forward to the opportunity to work with you and get to know you both better. Welcome to CUNY and New York. This concludes the public business of the board. I declare the meeting adjourned.